Order the public work session this evening. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so two quick announcements this evening for the public work session. We do have all board members present. We have excused all of the building level principals for the meeting this evening and just made it optional if they wanted to jump on. But because it would be a longer meeting tonight, we did excuse them for this portion. But we do have all board members present. Just to throw out a couple guidelines, just to kind of structure the meeting tonight. I would ask that we have just a very robust conversation this evening. Broken it up just with a couple little segments. I would ask that the discussion just be a very general discussion. You know, and leaving out some of the, you know, personal experiences, positive or negative. I think we can definitely dive into some of those, but we're certainly not here to, you know, to kind of bash or talk specifically praise or criticize specific departments or specific teachers. So board members as well as any viewers. When we open up to public comment, I would just ask that it's, we're focusing on the committee, the education committee. Just kind of the purpose of it and the, the composition of it. So keeping that in mind, just a general, just very candid conversation, robust conversation. This evening is a chance for all the board members to just have a, have that discussion publicly. But also not detract from our regular board meeting. So that's why we separated the two. So with that, I would just open it up. The first little section, just to kind of discuss the purpose of the committee. Thinking as far as drafting a charge for the committee. I'll open the floor to any board members, you know, what are we looking? Dr. Polynchak, if you want to jump in as well. I know that you certainly have some insight here as well. As far as what, what might be a healthy purpose or, or charge for the committee. So I'll just kind of open it up to that discussion.
We have a PowerPoint here that just has for the board's discussion in no particular order, looking at the membership. Who, how many school directors should be on this committee? What other administrators, staff members, community members might we want to have? The frequency of the meetings, when would they occur? Would this be something that's a monthly meeting like some of our other meetings are? Or would it meet bi-monthly, quarterly? And what would be the scope of the work? And I think that's the most important piece. What would the board? Would this committee operate as a first step before something such as a program or a textbook approval goes through to the boards? So that the committee had the opportunity to look at that and learn more? Would this, and that's just an example of something that could happen. Would this committee then also make requests of the administration for particular sets of data? Or more information about a topic related to education? It could be anything from assessments to any kind of legislation implementation that, that the school districts would need to do. And, and education has to do with, in my estimation, it could be anything, general education program, special education program, anything that's really impacting the students. But that could also be narrowed or better defined so that we know what would come through the committee or the committee would handle versus what might actually go directly to the board for its consideration.
Jen, I have a kind of a tidbit here. What about the CTC Center over there at Sun Tech? We're in the process of closing a program over there and Jen's thinking about adding another program possibly in a year's time. You got, is that going to have an impact on this committee at all? Cause we have students that attend over there. Would they sit in on any kind of a committee that they might have over there, whoever would be on this committee?
Um, they, they possibly could if they were to look for representatives from the district to, to advocate for the elimination of that program or the expansion or addition or creation of a new one. I think that that would make, that would make sense.
Okay, I'll, I'll mention that to Jen, see how she's going to, we're not sure how it's going to be handled yet. Okay, thank you.
I guess I'm, I'm curious to hear more about what maybe some of the things that we've discussed in the past couple of months that might productively have come before an education committee before coming before the whole board. I think, I mean, I think all of us are here because we feel very invested in education. Obviously as a school board, we, we are involved in other things too. But it's hard for me to think of who wouldn't want to be on an education committee. So I guess I need to, I need, I would like to hear how it could, how it could make us more effective and facilitate matters to choose a subset of people to participate in conversations ahead of time before they come to the whole board, given that the whole board is still going to be invested and still want to have those conversations.
So an example could be a pilot program. If we were to pilot a different kind of device for our one-to-one program that we have. The committee would be the ones recommending the pilot to the board, but would be more involved with how that pilot is being constructed and, and implemented and the data that's gathered. Let's say we decided that we wanted to move away from the MacBook Pros and go to a different kind of a device. A recommendation would eventually have to come to the board and a synopsis of the pilot and what our data was. But the, the questions kind of guiding that and the analysis of what we find in a pilot could come to the education committee. So they could, they could drill down and dive deeper into that. Another thing that can happen too is if we wanted to, and these are just in conversations that have happened. If we really wanted to look at whether or not our physical education, health and wellness program, K-12, is addressing all of the required components that have been since mandated. From, you know, health and nutrition to suicide prevention. There are some things that we need to make sure that we're teaching. They could ask for us to do an audit of the curriculum and delineate where in each grade those different topics are, are hit upon. It's true, Virginia, we could do it as a whole board, but this committee would be more focused on some of those details that often don't come forward in a board meeting because they're, they're granular.
Thanks, that's helpful.
Jen, when you first proposed this committee, what were you thinking in terms of all of these aspects? Membership, charge, all that sort of thing?
Um, well, it could never be five people from the board. So to make sure that that it's low, less than five, more than one. So I, I would say that as, there are questions that emerge about our program, how our students are doing, the type of instruction. Not ever specific about a, a staff member because that's more of an administrative issue. But how are we using instructional technology to maximize students' learning? How could we maybe expand a program? Like if we were to look at our technology education program and we really wanted to expand in the areas of video production, for which we have a video production center at both the middle school and the high school. That charge could come from the committee to do that and to explore. It can also be a venue where parents who might, let's say, be concerned about how math instruction is happening or how much or how little STEM is happening, as well as students to be able to, to voice what they feel like they maybe are getting or not getting. That could be a place where that can happen. That again, it's not going, the board would, the committee would only make a recommendation to the board. The board still has to vote and take action on anything that would come from that committee. But it could be a place where we could get into some of those details that we don't typically get to in a public board meeting.
Would you envision a situation where it's not just one education committee? I imagine that some people might care more about technology. Some people might care more about assessment and data. Some people might have different expertise areas, whether that's, you know, by grade level, like elementary versus secondary or by subject area, like, you know, literature and humanities versus STEM orientation. I, I see that, you know, just, just one committee might have some representation from across the board, but not necessarily get the benefit of a person who has particular area expertise and then also sometimes not engage everyone.
Yeah, I, I think that would be appropriate. I think in technology kind of crosses all of those areas in some respects. But to think about it from a humanities kind of end, which can assume social studies, the arts, literature and STEM, which is more towards the sciences and the math. And of course, we're always trying to integrate some art with that as well through design and STEAM. But it, we could also, this is an opportunity too for some school directors to, that are on this committee to also become better educated about not only what is the best practice out there and what the research is saying, but also what our mandates are from the Department of Ed. There are certain things we have to do. There are certain things that certainly are monitored, we want to pay closer attention to. Not that all the board wouldn't be interested in that, but they could have and speak to and have better expertise in that area, which would be helpful. The only consideration I would suggest is just that we would look at the frequency of the meetings then, since some of the key people involved from the administrative end would, would probably be on both. This is also, it's an opportunity for some presentations that teachers can also give of what does math instruction look like? Let's say every odd grade and you can see the progression of how that, those foundational skills are then used later on and how complex some of those things could be. They're just ideas that, that are coming out there.
Well, maybe there wouldn't have to be more than one committee, but people could do sort of like offshoot projects as per interest or expertise, you know? But that, I don't know how large you want the whole thing to be, Dr. Polynchak.
It could, you could have an education committee that then forms a subcommittee to look specifically at, is an example of a, a technology pilot. If we're looking at a different device, it's coming through the education committee. But a board director that is more connected to and knowledgeable about would be working with the administration on that pilot. And these, these are things that are, that are big cultural shifts in the district. And it's really important for the administration to have that connection to the board and to the community to truly make sure that the direction we, we recommend to go into is, is really going to be accepted by the community, but also in the other way to help to educate that this might be the best direction for our students.
I think I would want to do some stakeholder feedback before we got started so that we could ask the public what they thought were the most important things impacting their, their children as they see it. As maybe a first pass. I, I mean, I know that deciding which device to go with is very important to the board because we're going to spend money on it. It's going to be a huge purchase and we're committing to a certain platform for a while. But for parents, they might not care as much about the device. They might care that, you know, we make sure that our learning management systems are a certain way or something like that. So I, I might in, as a preceding any subcommittee we might form or any charge we might set for ourselves. We might want to just ask, what do you feel are the most important aspects for an education committee to consider in the next? And let's give a timeframe like one to three years.
I think it would be appropriate for the committee to also hold some open forums, roundtable meetings with different stakeholders. People may want to, certainly will give you information in a survey, but that face-to-face or Zoom-to-Zoom interaction is really important. And I do think it's important that the board hears that that's coming without the filter. It's, it's directly to the board members representing on that committee. It's not through the filter of the administration.
I might, sorry, sorry, I just was going to say, I might suggest that a, a charge for a standing committee that presumably will exist for, you know, many years would be general enough that I think we could, we could devise a charge and form the committee before seeking that, that input. And then that input would help, would help the committee decide which specific issues to pursue in the short term. But I'm not sure that I would want to hold up the, the creation of the committee until getting that input. Because I think the charge should be general enough that, that the input, you know, if people want us to focus on learning management systems, that's not going to be part of the committee charge. That's going to be a topic that the committee is going to take up.
I'd like to comment what Erin said. I, I kind of in a way disagree with her at this point due to the fact that I think a better thing would be is to, and maybe you've done this Jen, but I'm not sure. Get a overall theme from your administration and, and a few staff members. And what they see that this committee might, their purpose would be to function. I'd rather get, because they're in the trenches, they're, they're doing this. And then reach out to the community after we get a feel from them. I mean, I would feel more comfortable getting their viewpoints and their suggestions.
Yeah, I think you and Virginia are saying sort of the same thing.
She's reaching out to the community, but I'm reaching internally.
Right, so that the committee itself would then do the outreach after we, and also knowing that the administration is going to be guiding a lot, all of this really. So if there's a general charge, that, that makes a ton of sense.
I would also want to make sure that the teachers are not concerned that the board is about to start micromanaging their educating. You know, somebody listening to this might think that we're about to start telling them how they have to teach along division. And, and I certainly don't think that's the purpose of the committee or would ever be the business of the committee.
I felt the same way about the mention of textbooks. I don't know that anybody needs to be digging around in textbook selection, right? That's, if it's not objectionable or incorrect, I don't think we need to make that decision for anyone. But so, so I might have misspoken before, I meant for the subcommittee work when I was saying to identify issues. I agree, we can, I totally agree that we should be able to write a charge that is general and enduring.
I also have a concern, oh, go ahead Jen.
No, I was going to say, like, we've often talked about the 21st century skills, 21st century learner, preparing kids for the 21st century. There's always 21st century. If the committee's charge could be to prepare for the 22nd century, nobody's thinking about that yet. But how could we be very forward-thinking and innovative? And to get a sense of what the community sees that and wants for their students, as well as what the teacher sees, the internal strengths and capacities and areas where they want to see that expansion, where those, where those things intersect would be where our focus could be. Because there's some consensus on both ends. However, if teachers or staff or internal community thinks everything is just great, but parents are really concerned about something, then that's really something to examine because there's some disconnect then at that point.
My personal picture of what this might look like is not necessarily that we need experts in certain fields. Using the HVAC committee that, the ad hoc committee that the board had made. I sat in on most of those meetings and, you know, you, you don't necessarily need to be an HVAC expert to sit on, to sit in on those meetings and, you know, to come back to the board and, and have those discussions. You know, I think that this is something that I, I think we need to be very careful with the perception of the formation of this committee. Just exactly what I think was Virginia said, you know, we don't want to be seen as micromanaging or, you know, coming in and really taking over those things. I think it needs to be a, a committee that is able to spend a little bit more time than the rest of the board can during regular meetings. I think that, you know, whoever commits to this committee, you know, knows that there, there might be some long conversations and some, that the board is giving the, the committee a, a direction, the committee's meeting with these folks and then coming back with recommendations. I just think we need to be careful with kind of how we're wording it as far as experts in the fields and, you know, board involvement there. I think we just want to be very careful with that. So is there a direction, again, you know, as far as the, the purpose, the, you know, a, a general charge? That's kind of what I'm hearing, you know, more of a general charge. Is there, you know, is there anything that we want to, just a draft to kind of get down, written on paper? You know, just to kind of concrete that a little bit more? Is there somebody who wants to throw out something general?
Does a draft charge exist?
No.
So, so some of the things I've heard, you know, the long range planning for the 22nd century. I, I can, I can see those kinds of things. I understand the purpose of long-range planning. I completely agree that we want to avoid the perspective of micromanagement and getting into, getting overly involved in things that we shouldn't be involved in. I can't help but ask the question, I, I guess I don't really understand what the purpose of the committee is still. I'm at a loss to, I'm, I'm having trouble grasp me why we need it. Or what it's going to do. It kind of reminds me of when I worked for the government, we used to schedule meetings to, just to set another meeting. Because we, and we never really got anything done. It's sort of reminiscent of that to me, I'm sure that's not the intent.
And I think it's a fair question. I think it's, the committee would have the opportunity if they're, they have knowledge of their hearing, their experiencing, you know, through their own children. The opportunity to talk with administration, to get some more information, to ask us to look into something. Is this the practice we have right now? Is this the best practice? Do some analysis, auditing of what we're currently doing and be able to present that back. It may come back to the committee with, well, as we looked into this, we see that we do have some areas that are gaps and issues. And this is what we're proposing to do. It could be an action that we could just go about doing, but if it's something that requires the board to vote on, then from the committee, it would go to the board. It may not be a me, a committee that needs to meet as frequently as policy is an example that meets every month for the most part. It may be something that doesn't need that much time. And, and one would hope that too, if we're going to go back and take a look at something and gather that data and information, that we might need some time to be able to do that.
Okay, so having participated in the ad hoc committee, I thought that was a very beneficial process. So if, would I be correct in saying that this, you're sort of suggesting having a standing ad hoc committee to field issues like that? Is, is that accurate?
I think that's correct. And rather than calling it ad hoc, it would just be called the education committee.
Okay, that, that, that makes sense to me. I can understand that. And the fact that you're not going to necessarily meet very early unless, or unless something comes up, that all makes sense to me too. Like, I can, I can wrap my head around it though.
Taking the liberty of, sorry, just to say, I've taken the liberty of drafting something which I'm putting in the chat.
Thank you. I was gonna say, what I like about the ad hoc committee though, is people in the moment for that topic express interest. And then they'll put in the work to, you know, look through data and be very engaged. So there's a, there's a significant difference between ad hoc and standing because standing has some set membership and ad hoc is as interested.
I like that, Virginia.
I was gonna say, Virginia, we do have some participants who are on the phone, they're not online. So if you wouldn't mind reading your proposed charge out loud, I think that would be helpful.
Happy to do that. I do offer it only as a draft. And I'm sure some of the wording might need to be adjusted by people who know better than I what the right words are. But what I wrote is this, "The Education Committee of the Lewisburg Area School District will be dedicated to the investigation and consideration of matters to do with curriculum and learning. The purpose will be to thoroughly analyze current practices and possible new practices in order to present thoughtful recommendations to the board."
I like that.
I also think that-
Regarding to the issue you raised Erin, could it not be that the education committee, when it is presented with a particular situation, might decide to make the recommendation to then form an ad hoc committee so that you would have your certainty, certain people or persons that had the opportunity to participate? Would that be an acceptable practice maybe?
Yeah.
I think this gives, I think this is good and it gives wide latitude to sort of what subjects are being discussed. And then Dr. Polynchak can sort of guide that process.
If you remember Kathy Swob, when the chair of that one committee for career training in the future, and of course, look how that branched out. But we just met in the spring and the fall. And let's, you know, certain, we never actually called any other meetings other than spring and the fall. But I could see maybe this could be the case with this committee unless something arises that needed to be addressed immediately. So just a thought.
Yeah, I think sort of putting Mary and Corey's comments together, if I understand correctly, it could be a committee that meets regularly, you know, once in the fall and once in the spring, but then is sort of on call for ad hoc purposes when things arise. Yeah.
And much to that point, I agree, we don't want to meet to meet or generate work for the purposes of having something to fill an agenda for a committee. It's, it's not the best use of everybody's time. But that could be, it could be a two-way street with that too. It could be a committee member who wishes to convene because there's a concern or an interest in something that they can call that. It's not called at the administration's behest solely, which I think is an important distinction.
I, I think I, I, just hit me. Do we need to distinguish between curriculum concerns or parents' gripes? Is there going to be a difference? I mean, the gripes to me, I would think would have to go to the principal. First to the teacher, then to the principal. But I think this is a, a bigger spectrum of maybe that gripe, so to speak, coming from the principal or whatever. A more serious nature, that's my interpretation of this.
I would agree, if there's a concern with a particular teacher and what they're doing, that's a personnel matter. And that doesn't belong to the committee. But if it's something like how we're teaching math in general, that affects all math teachers, the instruction of math. So that would be something the committee would look at. We wouldn't hone in on one particular teacher's, you know, a parent has an issue with, or the other, reverse of it, that the parent overly, you know, loves that teacher and wants that teacher every year, all the time for their students. That, that's more of a building level issue.
I guess I would come back to asking, you know, we have a, a draft that seems to be, people are, seem to be in favor of. Is, is this definitely something that the board would like to proceed with even just as, as far as creating this committee? Is it something that everybody feels is necessary and that the board would like? Or, you know, do we want to examine some of the- Or, you know, do we want to examine some of these things and dive a little bit deeper during our regular board meetings? Are we, before we proceed, is this something that that the board would definitely like to move forward with?
The committee, is that what you're asking, Jordan?
Yes.
I mean, if it's something Dr. Polentchak wants, and now that we've sort of established a rough goal, I think it makes sense. Um, I would say to that, what you've written, Virginia, maybe putting purpose will be to analyze current practices and possible new practices. I'm wondering if we need to say as necessary or as just because it sounds right there like it's everything, like
Yeah.
You're gonna examine everything. And so if that's not the case, we might want to qualify it.
Yeah, I think you could put as needed. Yeah, that's a good point, Mary Ann.
And I mean, I'm in favor to Jordan's question. I'm in favor of proceeding with this. I'm partially, I mean, I think it sounds like a good idea, and I also think we don't we don't really know how good of an idea it is until we try it and get a sense of, right? I think the idea is that we'll actually be able to to pursue some of these topics in more depth than we can do in a regular board meeting, and consequently, the board will be involved in pursuing certain things in more depth, and I think that's a positive thing. If after establishing the committee and and meeting for a year or something, we find that it's not productive, or it's in fact, people, other members of the board are feeling shut out of those conversations, we can always cancel it, right? I don't, you know, we're not signing our lives away to this committee. I think it certainly sounds like a good experiment.
And I think it's good for us to, I think I think it would help us to understand more and be a little more involved from a um, you know, sort of understanding the work that's happening. Not guiding it, but understanding it better.
If we could, returning to the charge, include something about assessment. That's one of the you know, big things that the board looks at, and we don't always have time to go in depth with the data during, you know, the regular public meetings, but I think there are some aspects of assessment that might warrant a second look or a more in-depth look.
I also think the, you know, the committee as a whole is a good idea. Um, and I I was going to bring up the data presentation that the board is, you know, is given each um, once a year. Uh, I think it's it's a lot of information, as we all know, and so during one board meeting, it really is hard to, you know, to really dive deep into those numbers and really, um, you know, get a grasp. Um, the presentations are always well done, and I think the board gets a good summary. But I think that this is also something that the board could say, you know, we're concerned about, you know, pick whatever, you know, the topic X, um, you know, can can the committee investigate that a little bit and collaborate with the administration? Uh, and I think that it can also without without tying up a lot of the regular board meetings, I think the board can give direction to the committee. Um, you know, that's something that has happened in the past, and, you know, the committee can then report back to the board on a little bit more regular basis as far as what's, you know, that data and how um, what's being done to, you know, uh, to change that data. So I think it's a good idea as a whole. Uh, I think it could be a really productive productive way to dive a little bit deeper. So I'm getting a general sense, yes, for the committee. Um, the charge, you know, as Virginia drafted, um, you know, I'm hearing that that we're liking that that draft of a charge. Anything else before we kind of move on to the composition of the of the committee? Um, anything else as far as the committee in general?
I would just suggest that perhaps one of the committee's first orders of business could be to refine the charge. Um, I because I do think it is very much a draft.
Absolutely, but I think I I think you did a good job, Virginia, as far as just putting something down, and we can, we can certainly refine that, but it at least gives us something that the entire board is is saying, yes, we want to proceed with this and um, you know, refining that draft a little bit. Anything else? So as far as the um, the committee composition, who stakeholders, uh, what's everyone thinking as far as who would um, who's a part of this committee?
I think at least one primary principal and one secondary principal. Oh, I'm sorry, elementary and secondary. Um, and if possible, although I know it's hard to ask this, but a staff member, you know, a teacher in those grade levels at the elementary level and the secondary level, any subject, just. Could this be one of those things? I know pre-tenure, there's this um, short term, you know, almost like conscription that we do, so if we could have that.
Yeah, I I think it certainly can. Um, we may want to say we have at least one, but also have some limits as well. It it's good for young teachers or newer teachers coming to the district. This will be very informative for them as well. Um, so it's um, Ms. Moser oversees our placement of our uh non-tenured teachers, and I see her shaking her head, but we we may have some veteran teachers, especially if we break off into an ad hoc that have some expertise to see our curriculum leaders in the building, or those teachers teaching that particular subject absolutely have to be a part of that conversation. Um, we wouldn't want to do on to them without their input and acknowledging their expertise.
I I wonder what thoughts you have, Dr. Polentchak, about including student representation on the committee? Um, I was recently approached by a member of the student council at the high school about student representation on the on the board, which there isn't really a great mechanism for, um, but this seems like a place where it would be really useful to hear from some students, and they would also learn a lot from the experience if you feel that would be appropriate.
I would say probably at least middle school and high school students, um, as they be able to make some of that type of commitment to it, and not that the younger students couldn't articulate, but um, just their their age and their maturity, they're able to understand what some of the work of the committee would be. Um, and again, we're not looking, we're not revealing anything that's um personally identifiable information about any of their their peers or, you know, in any way would be sensitive information. But definitely to get from the students their experiences and perspectives. There there are customers at the end of the day, and um, I've I've always found that high school students in particular that they want to see that experience be better for themselves and their peers and those kids coming after them, and to give them a voice to be a part of that is always positive, and they're honest, so.
I would also personally open it up to um, a a parent or community stakeholder as well. Um, having, you know, one or two representation representatives from the community. Um, and not necessarily, I'm not sure how uh, how many people would want to do this if they don't have a student in the district, but a community member that may or may not have a student in the district uh, who, you know, a business owner or somebody who has a stake uh in the in the community. So I would advocate for, you know, a few members of the community.
Would we also want to have somebody like um, from guidance or social worker or something also on the committee? I think they could give a a different perspective for, um, I don't know, and any, any uh if we had, if we had a equipment issue, and would it be able to be used by, you know, to all different people? Maybe they may be able to provide, you know, some information on that.
I agree with that, Anne, because of the investment in the social emotional learning curriculum second step and those sorts of things. And as we looked at some of those units, recall when we weren't sure which units of that um, sort of upper level to approve, I think having a committee look more carefully, even review the material in that case, because it was I think that some of those areas are things that that parents tend to care a little bit more about. Um, leaning towards the health curriculum.
We could call that um, a member of the non-teaching um, professional staff, because, and that's not my term, that's actually Department of Ed's term, but they they're not rostered with students per se, they're seeing students as needed. Um, but they do have a different perspective and and also sometimes an understanding. Our guidance counselors know what courses students have to take as an example at the high school, what they need credits for graduation, but they don't know specifically what's taught in each of those courses or what some of that instruction and learning looks like. So when working with a student who's struggling or speaking with a parent who's expressing some concerns about how their students performing in the class, they can have some better insight into that.
Can I just ask um, a technical question? Is, I see that Paula Young is in the meeting. Is is she taking notes? Is somebody capturing this?
Hi, Virginia, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Is there, uh, Dr. Polentchak, what are your thoughts on the timing of of the creation of this? Um, something that, you know, even as soon as the next board meeting, that we would assign some board members and and start to get um, get some invitations out to people to join the committee and get some dates set? I mean, is that your timing of it? Um, are you looking to do it right away or, you know, later this spring, next fall? What are your thoughts?
I think within the spring, it would be appropriate to do it because, as um, Virginia mentioned, this is a draft that thank you very much for putting that language around there, but you really want the committee to be able to review that. And um, as they discuss a little bit what this work would be, the frequency, would this just be a fall and a spring as needed? And go ahead and set those dates, so that would almost be a work session for the Education Committee to then um, further that that work, so everybody can understand the scope of the, what's there.
So I'm assuming then that you don't think that this will be overwhelming from a time perspective? Like, I I think we're all aware that everybody's pretty much running at red line levels all year. I mean, we have literally have standing committees now that haven't met all year just because of everything. I don't wanna, again, I just want to make sure that we're not overwhelming people with everything else that's happening right now.
I I would say no. I mean, there are certain things that administration is already starting to talk about in terms of instruction and technology, and it would be really helpful for this committee to help to inform that work, because it's work we're going to have to do anyway. Um, but certainly getting a a sense of, you know, what priorities might be from the community as well as from our internal stakeholders. That that's important because that helps to shape the work so that we're doing the right work and not work that we think needs to be done without really any basis or support from the end receiver of what we do.
Okay.
Anything else then, uh, that anybody would like to uh, add at this point?
I I just have one comment as far as composition of the committee. I know you mentioned guides, counselors, but also I think it'd be good to include Brenda Zach uh, with her career background and what she, what we are doing with the career training. Just a thought.
All right, anything else? Um, what I'd like to do, I know we have a few participants joining us this evening. Um, so if there's nothing else coming from the board, I would just, uh, before we move on to our regular meeting, uh, open it up to any public comments, um, you know, that any of the participants joining us this evening would like to make. So uh, if there's anybody who would like to, um, John, I think you were going to make them a a panelist so that they can, uh, that we can see them and hear them. Uh, if there's anybody who would like to make a comment to the board tonight, uh, if you can um, either raise your hand on Zoom or send a message on chat.
Jordan, I'm just checking as far as timing wise, we're not going to go right into the, if we finish before seven, we're not going to go right into the other meeting, right? Since we've published that as starting at seven.
Uh, we published it as uh, immediately following, so we will go right into the into the regular.
All right.
That is, yeah, thank you.
I'm not seeing any raised hands, and we don't have anybody in the chat, but.
Okay, then, uh, board, anything else, uh, before I ask for a motion to adjourn the public work session?
I'm just a little, so we've decided we have a draft charge, and we have some ideas about who who is going to compose the committee and its frequency, so that's good. We worked down our list of things to do, but what happens next?
So either next meeting, it doesn't have to be next meeting. Uh, I think uh, we will get a some, a list of board members. Um, at our last meeting, we did approve the committee assignments. Uh, I think it's appropriate to assign some board members to this committee as well, and then uh, work with Dr. Polentchak as far as finalizing a time, uh, sometime this spring to move forward with uh, inviting some participants and uh, getting a group together, uh, as far as who um, you know, do, if we're asking for volunteers or if we're, you know, Mary had mentioned Brenda Zach. Um, again, just kind of finalizing a list of the of the committee members other than the board, um, and then moving forward with that. Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and I think the conversations that I had previously that kind of led to this public work session, um, you know, I think that we can, I can pretty easily, well, not so easily, but uh, I can definitely narrow down some uh, some board involvement and come back with um, you know, with a committee recommendation that the board would approve uh, to serve on that committee. Okay, um, anything else? Otherwise, I would ask for a motion to adjourn the public work session.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Brow, seconded by Dr. Jablonski. Any discussion? Hearing none, um, I will take a voice vote, all in favor of adjourning the public work session. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries.